Really hard.
I know, and that's a funny thing, too. We're all so far away from each other, but it's actually more clear to hear you.
Yeah, you kind of forget about that, that it actually does. I think having the remote meetings, assuming, you know, people's microphone is working. It really is a lot easier to understand what people are saying. It, that happened when we were at the planning board two weeks ago, too, when some people, you know, depending on where they were sitting in relation to the microphone, some people you could hear and some people you couldn't hear. And it depended on a lot of things, which was always the case at our meetings, you know, we always had to adjust microphones so that certain, certain people were audible and some people don't want to use the microphone. It's really weird.
Hey Jeff, speaking of microphones, this is Chris.
Hey Chris, yeah, I was gonna check in with you. How was, how was everything at the Sullivan Chamber today? We were talking about how, how tough it was yesterday. I went in for one council item and I couldn't hear anything because there were so many fans going.
Yeah, it's still hot in here, of course. You're lucky you're not here today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry that you have to be there. Hopefully you can get away to someplace cooler during the meeting.
Yeah, I have an air conditioning backup.
Hi Hugh, that's a beautiful background you have there.
Well, it's actually a picture I took two minutes ago.
Oh wow.
And there's thunderstorms around, but so there's big gray clouds. I'm looking due east.
Okay.
Sunset and yeast.
There was big thunder earlier, but it wasn't really a storm. It just sort of passed. Go back into virtual world. A nice thing, everybody.
So Mary's gonna be absent today.
And, and Steve.
Yeah, okay. Like people are taking their time today.
Yeah.
Everybody got the right meeting invite?
Yeah, I got the reminder at yeah, so Council Carlon is here.
Oh, great. Counselor, you're on mute.
Catherine is here.
That was to your advantage.
It's good to, it's good to see you. Good to have you here. Hi Catherine.
Hello.
Great, so, so people are
Quentin should be here shortly.
Okay, I was gonna say people are kind of trickling in a little bit. Just one thing to note for I don't know if we did note this for, for Counselor Zondervan and his team, but we try to start the meeting pretty promptly at 6:30. I know you do that, too, for, for committee hearings. Because they, because they've got the cable TV running, so they want to be, they want to stick to the programming schedule.
I can go away if you want to talk about something. Well, just in case.
No, just trying to get every, we try as much as we can before, before the meeting actually starts for people to show up early to, to do a sound check and make sure everyone's audio is working.
Ted has joined.
I'll text Quentin.
Hey Ted.
Hello.
Hi.
Had to find the mute switch.
Good. Always good to practice finding the mute button before, before we go live.
Well Hugh, you look nice and cool. Are you someplace near your backdrop, or is that just a fraud?
Actually, it's a picture I took about 10 minutes ago.
Oh.
Because it was so pretty and I thought I would just put it out there. But now it's all gray, but what the hell? And it's about it's like it's about 75 degrees here.
That is cold compared to the 90 degree here.
I don't exactly know what it's like outside, but it was, it was really hot and the I think this, it's starting to drop now, so I wonder if the, if the rain is making its way towards where we're at.
There's a whole cluster of pop-up thunderstorms that's traveling across New England.
Yeah.
And there's, you know, it hasn't hit, one of them hasn't come past here yet, but they slide by on either side. They're heading for you.
Hi Tom.
We'll be ready.
Sorry.
Hi Swathy.
Thank you.
The storms aren't that far away. I was just on a call with somebody from Jamaica Plain and it all, you know, the heavens were opening up above his head. And yet it's all dry in my garden, so.
It's clear blue skies and sunshine here on Broadway.
Of course, it's always sunny in Cambridge, Counselor Carlon.
It depends on the night, Tom.
That's the voice of experience.
Hi Lou, we can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check?
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello.
I, I dared, I'll live without air conditioning, probably like others on this call, you know, just because I'm a sustainability guy. I'm not gonna do that and, but this might be reaching, beginning to reach the limits. I may have to go to my office.
I don't have air conditioning at home, but today I'm glad I'm not home. So I think that's all the planning board members we're gonna have, so I think it's just seeing if Counselor Zondervan and his team join, but if it, if it rolls around to 6:30, then we'll, we'll start up the meeting and he'll be able to join in progress.
He's at the door. He has a message waiting for the meeting to begin.
Oh, that's because he's trying to join as a
I asked him to look for your email.
Oh, okay.
It's okay, I guess we'll, I guess we'll just promote people after we start.
Sorry.
But yeah, if he checks his email, there should be a, there should be a panelist invite.
Hello.
Hi Counselors Zondervan, so we're live. Sorry about the confusion about the panelist invite, but we're live and do you have a presentation that you'll be showing? We can make sure that that gets
What's the best way to send it to you? Should I send the PDF or?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thanks. Then do, do I need to share by screen or will you do that?
I guess we could do it either way. Since you're the only presentation for this meeting, then we could, I'll just allow you to to share the screen, so you can do it.
Jeff, I already hit that button so that he can share it.
So what we do, for those of you joining us and wondering why everyone's sitting here, they will, we'll wait a couple of minutes to let attendees get situated in the meeting and then the chair will kick it off.
Good evening and welcome to the June 29th, 2021, meeting of the Cambridge Planning Board. My name is Catherine Preston Connolly and I'm the Chair. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. All board members, applicants and members of the public will state their name before speaking. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public will be kept on mute until it is time for public comment. I will give instructions for public comment at that time, and you can also find instructions on the city's webpage for remote planning board meetings. This meeting is being video and audio recorded and is being streamed live on the City of Cambridge online meeting portal and on cable television channel 22 within Cambridge. There will also be a transcript of the proceedings. I'll start by asking staff to take board member attendance and verify that all members are audible.
Thank you Catherine. It's Jeff Roberts, Community Development. Louis Bachi, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
Thank you Lou. H Theodore Cohen, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
Thank you Ted. Stephen Cohen, are you present? Is the meeting audible to you? Absent. Mary Flynn, are you present and is the meeting audible to you? Mary Flynn's also absent. Hugh Russell, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
Thank you Hugh. Tom Sadevich, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible. Thank you Jeff.
Thank you Tom. Associate members are not present. And Catherine Preston Connolly, are you present and is the meeting audible to you?
Present and audible.
Thank you Catherine. So that's five planning board members present.
Thank you very much. Okay, then the first item is an update from the Community Development Department. Please start by introducing the staff present at the meeting.
Thank you Chair. Iran Farouk, Assistant City Manager for Community Development. Amongst staff, we have, as usual, our Intrepid Zoning and Development Team, Jeff Roberts and Swathy Joseph. And we are joined today by our Director of Environment and Transportation Planning, Suzanne Rasmussen. And in terms of updates for the board, tonight's meeting includes a public hearing for a city council zoning petition related to amendments to Article 22, which is the green building zoning in the, in the ordinance. We will not have a planning board meeting next week. The next meeting will be July 13th, which will include two special permit hearings. One is an amendment to a, an old special permit at 7 Cornelius Way. And the second is a public hearing for special permit for 48 Pearl Street. We expect to possibly also have, have a present, a presentation on the Tobin School, which is not coming to the planning board for any kind of approval, but is going to be seeking approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals for some variances and therefore will be before, before the planning board in an advisory capacity. The next meeting will be July 20th, which will include a PUD special permit on the, on MIT's Volpe Master Plan. So I will, I will stop with July there on the board's agenda and move to other items of interest at the city council. And so the on the 14th of July, the city council's Transportation Committee is going to hold a hearing on parking policies that would include the zoning components. On the 21st of July at 2 o'clock, the Public Safety Committee and the Economic Development and University Relations Committees of the council will have a joint hearing on cannabis cooperatives and how they can participate in equitable development of the emerging cannabis industry in Cambridge. And the, the zoning petition we are hearing today, the ordinance committee will have their hearing on this Article 22 zoning petition on the 28th of July. The city council's summer meeting is slated for August 2nd. Just a couple other items from last night's city council meeting. There is a new zoning petition coming from city council that has been referred related to permitting animal hospice in residential districts. Other things, last night, the city council did adopt changes to the tree ordinance, which is something that I know the board has been following and there have been in the changes thereafter. in the changes thereafter to strengthen that the elements of the tree ordinance, that strengthen the protections for for trees. And I think the the last piece, which is not something we typically talk about at at planning board, but I think for those who who follow Cambridge politics, it's probably a big deal, which is that councillor Toomey, who has served for over thirty years on the city council, announced last night that he will not be seeking reelection. So that's going to be a big change. With that, I am going to turn it back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then the next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. The board has received certified transcripts for the meetings held on May eighteenth and May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. If there are any questions from board members, please say your name and state your question. No? Is there a motion to accept the transcripts as the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Seconded, Tom.
So we got Lou Louis moves and Tom seconds. Roll call vote, please.
On that motion, Lubachi?
Yes.
Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinevich?
Yes.
Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
It's all members voting in favor.
Great. All right, then we will move on. And our next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a zoning petition by the city council, new men, section twenty two point two zero of the zoning ordinance of the City of Cambridge to create a new section, twenty two point two four point four, emissions accounting. And as usual, CDD staff will begin by summarizing why this is before us.
Thank you, Jeff Roberts, once again, Director of Zoning and Development. So just quickly, this is the hearing that the planning board might recall was originally scheduled for June eighth. The petition was then refiled, had to go through a schedule, had a scheduling issue, needed to kind of restart the clock. And so that hearing was rescheduled until tonight. This is a petition that was referred by the city council. Councilor Quentin Zondervan and councillor Dennis Carlon are here to describe and discuss it along with others. CDD staff provided a memo with some some background information and comments, and that was including us on the zoning development team, as well as the environment and transportation team. And as you mentioned, Suzanne Rasmussen is here. If there's any questions, the board's action, as with all zoning petitions, is to make a recommendation to the city council. So I'll turn it back over there.
Thank you so much. And as Jeff noted, our presenter on this petition will be City Councillor Quentin Zondervan. You may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first make sure I can share my screen. So can everyone see that okay?
We can, yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so thank you to the planning board for the opportunity to present the Green New Deal zoning petition, which proposes to charge newly constructed commercial buildings for their greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change and use the funds to reduce our emissions overall in Cambridge and to create economic opportunity through green jobs. So I'm joined here tonight by three community members, as well as a co-petitioner, City Councillor Dennis Carlon. So we will hear first from Esther Kulkhan, who's a CRLS student and a leader in the Sunrise Cambridge Hub. Reverend Vernon K Walker, who is the Program Manager at Communities Responding to Extreme Weather. And Santos Carresquio, who's a resident of the port and also with Cambridge Community Growers. And then we'll hear from councillor Carlon and finally from myself with the details of the zoning petition. So I will now hand it over to Esther Kulkhan.
Hi. So to reiterate, my name is Esther Kulkhan. I'm a rising senior at CRLS and a representative from Sunrise Cambridge. I'm presenting today, not because I want to, but because I need to. This past week in DC, sunrisers from around the country made it clear that the climate crisis is urgent. There is no time to wait. Changes to global temperatures do not just affect the natural environment, they impact humans' lives. Rising temperatures, extreme weather, such as hurricanes, droughts, floods and forest fires, lack of water and other factors are threatening the global food supply, especially in low income communities. The longer the crisis goes unaddressed, the more people are put at risk of food insecurity and starvation. Every second we sit idly by, rising saltwater in Southeast Asia threatens rice production and droughts in the Horn of Africa are making crop yields unpredictable and forcing the migration of millions. This is not just a threat anymore. It's happening right now all across the world and it's getting worse. Next slide, please. The Green New Deal is the most important resolution in DC. It lays the foundations for combating greenhouse gases and addressing this crisis, while also creating green jobs and fighting against racial injustice. The deal talks about the transition from the fossil fuel industry to sustainable industries, a shift no one is calling simple. However, creating jobs is not just possible, it's lucrative. Already in the past decade, there has been an increase of one hundred and sixty seven percent in solar energy jobs. Maybe this is because it is not just sustainable, it pays better. The average hourly wage in fossil fuels is forty one dollars, while in solar it's forty three dollars. Additionally, this shift will multiply jobs as well. A study at UMass Amherst concluded that for every one million dollars in the fossil fuel industry that has transitioned to sustainable industries, there will be a net increase of five jobs. I don't think it could be any clearer than that. Saving our environment goes hand in hand with saving our people. The Green New Deal shows that we can mitigate the effects of climate change and create and create jobs for all Americans at the same time. With no other national resolution addressing climate change on the large level that it is needed and the absolute urgency of this need, the Green New Deal may be our only hope toward a sustainable and equitable future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Esther. We will next hear from the Reverend Vernon K Walker.
All right. Good afternoon. Greetings, member members of the planning board. I am the Reverend Vernon K Walker and I am the Program Manager of the Communities Responding to Extreme Weather, which our office is located here in Cambridge. I'm also an executive committee member of the Massachusetts Sierra Club. And I'm here today to talk a bit about the climate crisis. Climate change represents an urgent and existential threat to civilization with an international consensus of scientists agreeing that humanity must drastically reduce greenhouse gas emissions by by forty five percent by twenty thirty and reach net zero emissions by twenty fifty if the world is to limit warming warming to one point five degrees Celsius without endangering the existence of humans. From shifting weather patterns that threaten our food production to the rise in sea level that increase the risk of catastrophic flooding, the impacts of climate change are global in scope and unprecedented in scale. The effects are devastating in nature and dangerous to all natural ecosystems. Climate change is the defining issue of our time and we are at a defining moment. It is quite evident, if you have been outside today or if you have been paying attention to the news to look at the weather forecast, that we are in the midst of a heat wave across the United States. We are in the midst of a heat wave. Even at this moment, as I speak to you right now, it is ninety two degrees outside. We already feel the impacts of climate change here in the northeast region of the United States. Rise in sea levels are contributing to higher storm surges that extend further inland. Heat waves, as the one we are experiencing now, are expected to be hotter and more frequent and longer lasting throughout the next hundred years. Projections indicate that precipitation will increase, especially in the winter and spring in nor in the northern parts of our region. Consequently, climate change does not impact every community the same as communities of color, coastal communities and communities of low wealth are disproportionately impacted. As a result of climate change and the and the resulting climate impacts, Cambridge is deeply affected. If you look at this map that we have here, all it is quite evident that all Cambridge is not affected the same during heat waves. In particular, there are several communities that experience the urban heat island effect, such as our wife, East Cambridge, the port and North Cambridge. We certainly need more tree canopies in these communities. As I prepare to close, climate change is not a special single as climate change is not a single special interest issue alone, but is a rather multifaceted and complex crisis affecting public health, foreign policy, jobs, the economy, labor, civil rights, immigration, agriculture, et cetera. The failures and injustice of our economy and and our actions on climate are linked. And addressing and addressing climate change will require the rethinking of our economy from the ground up. Therefore, we need a Green New Deal for the city of Cambridge. And this can quickly, as I conclude, you see this map in front of you. It is it is interesting to note, the same areas that are disproportionately impacted by the urban heat island are the same areas where there are affordable, low income housing. We pointed out earlier, our wife, East Cambridge Port and North Cambridge. And it's the same areas in by twenty seventy that will consistently be flooded as we see these maps here. But it will be consistently be flooded by stormwater runoff. So we cannot wait. We need to lower carbon emissions in our city and require new buildings that are going to be built to be net zero, to be to 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 be net zero and also to be very friendly to the environment. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Reverend. Next, we will hear from Santos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Santos Carresquio, lifelong resident of the port, community organizer and also social social entrepreneur.
We lost you there, Santos. Seems he's muted.
Hello, everyone. My name is. There we go. Sorry about that. My name is Santos Carresquio, lifelong resident of the port, community organizer, social entrepreneur, board member of Green Cambridge, founder and co-founder of the Gory Freedom House, collaborator with the Black Response, Cambridge City Growers and many other mutual aid groups. I studied biotechnology at a Bunk Hill Community College and later Information Technology at Cambridge College. Also did a fellow's program with around community economic development at Suffolk. The port is hovered and surrounded and shadowed by the what we call the innovation economy. And there is a an enormous wealth disparity gap with our people and residents of the port. Through this Green New Deal, we will be able to create green new jobs and economically impact our underrepresented demographic in the port. Our black and brown residents, immigrants from different countries all need a pipeline into these different companies. When it comes to growing in the economy, we need jobs and business opportunities and contracts. Many residents in the port have begun working around creating economic opportunity and especially in our community gardens in the port, as we see here in the slide at Square Garden. The city has a an enormous program built around urban agriculture and we need to create more jobs and opportunities for urban forestry, urban farming and create a new economy where people can live, eat, play and work in this community. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Santos. Next, we will hear from councillor Dennis Carlon, my co-petitioner.
Thank you, Quentin. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I always enjoy coming to the planning board. This, I'm going to tell you what you already know, and you might say that's true of much of the presentation so far. Even though the Net Zero Action Plan was approved by the city council five years ago, we've built many more buildings since that time. And as you know, with laboratories, they don't come under more restrictive limitation in emissions until twenty thirty. So with the expansion, especially in in East Cambridge Kendall Square and North Point and Airwife, we see an increase in emissions. And you can see for yourself, the bottom four lines are residential buildings, manufacturing, construction, commercial and institutional buildings are the red and energy industries. And the accumulative is the upper blue gray color. And this does not include twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, but the belief is with expansion that we're not coming close to reducing anything due to new buildings. And that is the manager's plan that sixty percent of new development will be commercial buildings. So six years after the Net Zero Action Plan was unanimously adopted by Cambridge City Council in two thousand and fifteen, I'm honored to say I was the lead sponsor on the council. And eight years after we filed the original Net Zero zoning petition in two thousand and thirteen, led by Quentin Zondervan and my count Connolly, now councillor and state representative respectfully, with my support, because I was the first one on the council, emissions from Cambridge's buildings have only gone up. And as you know, buildings generate eighty percent of our emissions in Cambridge. In addition, as we discovered during the Folkerston Street Transfer Station situation, we are not addressing the ever increasing energy demand generated by new buildings in Cambridge, especially in Eastern Cambridge. And mostly, the energy domain is from laboratory buildings. So we need to do something about it. And the Article twenty two green buildings is the right place to do it. So Quentin will will now go into some detail about the pieces. But I'll just end by saying, if you count the amount of slides each person had, you can tell their importance in this. This is my only slide. Quentin, the floor is yours.
Thanks so much, Dennis. That's not true. Very good. So as Dennis mentioned, I will now go into some detail on the zoning proposal itself. And I'll first give an overview of the Article twenty two amendments that we're proposing and then explain why we're applying this to commercial buildings, how the emissions accounting would be done, what the use of the mitigation funds would be. what the use of the mitigation funds would be, and then some context around the zoning and compliance. So the proposal is to amend Article 22 Sustainable Design and Development, also known as the Green Building Zoning Ordinance, to add a new section 22.24.4 Emissions Accounting. As mentioned, this would only apply to new commercial buildings over 25,000 square feet. And it would add a requirement to calculate the total expected emissions from this new building. It would then further require a payment plan to offset those emissions. And it specifies how the funds would be used to mitigate those emissions. So why commercial buildings? As Councilor Carlon mentioned, 80%, over 80% of our emissions comes from buildings. And as you can see in this graph from the previous iteration of the Sustainability Dashboard on the Community Development's website, you can see that about 8% of our emissions come from residential buildings and the rest, most of the rest is from commercial buildings. And as Councilor Carlon mentioned, most of those emissions from the commercial buildings are from the laboratory buildings. And this data from the current iteration of the Sustainability Dashboard shows that the laboratory buildings are the main energy consumers and therefore the main contributors to the greenhouse gas emissions. Now, the amendments ask the developer to calculate their embodied emissions as well as their emissions from operating the building. And the embodied emissions are the emissions caused from producing the building materials as well as the construction activity itself. And from this pie chart on the left from Architecture 2030, you can see that building materials and construction activities globally represent about 11% of our CO2 emissions. And on the right-hand side, it's broken out slightly differently to show concrete, steel and aluminum, their contribution to emissions. So it's really critical that we account for the embodied emissions of the building, not just the operating emissions. And this discussion actually took place at the Net Zero Action Plan Five Year Review just over the last few months. And it is being contemplated by CDD to begin accounting for those embodied emissions. However, my understanding is that the plan is to study that and come forward with proposals over the course of perhaps several years. Whereas you've heard the enormous urgency of climate change and the need to act now. So while we may not be able to calculate the embodied emissions exactly, we can certainly estimate them and begin to account for them immediately. And so the petition then specifies that the total emissions would be the embodied emissions plus the lifetime emissions from operating the building. And I did do a sample calculation based on the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance data from 2016. Now, my sample calculation is a little different from what's contemplated by the zoning petition. But it was is just for illustrative purposes to get a sense of how much this would cost. Assuming that we use the social cost of carbon that is currently on the EPA's website at $36 a ton. And so for a fictional building, laboratory building of 100,000 square feet of average energy efficiency, my calculation yields a total emissions cost of $3 million. And if we instead use the most energy efficient building as of 2016 laboratory building, the total emissions cost would be $500,000. And again, these calculations are not meant to be exact, just illustrative to give you a sense. And of course, if the energy efficiency is worse, then the cost would be higher. But I'm assuming that we wouldn't build such energy inefficient buildings anywhere. So the emissions calculations would be done by consultants and experts in doing these calculations. Sustainability consultants are routinely engaged by these type of projects at the building design phase. And the specific formulas and the specific cost per ton to be used would be set by CDD through regulation. So the petition doesn't specify exactly what those need to be. It does specify some exemptions, including tenant plug loads, which of course a developer can't necessarily anticipate, as well as backup generators being exempt. And then the planning board would determine that the emission accounting has been done properly. They're not, the planning board is not expected to verify the calculations themselves. And this is analogous to other requirements, like lead requirements or green roof design, where the planning board is simply verifying that the proper design has been done. The ongoing compliance, once the building has been occupied, can be done under the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So this is a graphical representation of the emissions accounting. And what we see here, this is a fictional building again, that would be occupied in 2020. And so the blue rectangle represents the embodied emissions. So these are the emissions that were incurred prior to occupancy in production of materials and the actual construction activity. And then the green triangle represents the emissions going forward. And what you see here is that the assumption is that the emissions will reach zero by 2050 because, as has been stated, that is both the state and the city's greenhouse gas emissions goal. And so we are simply assuming that each building would reach the same goal of zero emissions by 2050. And the simplest way to model that is just a straight linear decline. So the building would estimate their annual emissions as of the first year of occupancy and then would just do as a linear decline to zero in 2050. Now, this next graph shows the potential interaction with the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance. So that ordinance is currently undergoing some proposed amendments that will be presented to the city council in the fall. But we got a preview in the Health Environment Committee of what is anticipated there. And basically, the idea is to have the buildings account for their emissions if they exceed the goal of getting to zero by 2050. So that's represented here by the red area in this graph. But what we would note is that if that's all we do, then the building would have to account for those excess emissions in red, but not for the expected emissions in green and blue. And so this Green New Deal zoning petition would require the building to account for their full emissions profile, including through the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance, any excess emissions that were not fully anticipated at the time of occupancy. And this also presents a good opportunity for a handoff from the zoning to the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance, once the building is occupied, because at that point, of course, it becomes an existing building subject to the buido. So this slide shows some of the potential uses of the mitigation funds that would be generated. And again, the specifics would be set by CDD through regulation. But the zoning petition offers some acceptable offsets, including energy efficiency upgrades to existing buildings in Cambridge. And this would help to address the issue that Councilor Carlon brought up about the infrastructure growth and the additional excess energy that has to be brought into Cambridge as we expand our building stock. And so by improving the energy efficiency and reducing emissions in other buildings, we maintain more of a balance. Other mitigation opportunities include paying directly into Cambridge's revolving Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Fund, creating new solar PV systems in Cambridge, creating community solar installations that benefit Cambridge residents and provide discounted electricity to them. And then paying directly for 100% renewable energy contracts. So the important thing to note is that the developer wouldn't necessarily pay the city directly. They would have options to mitigate the emissions themselves and then only pay the city if they're not choosing these particular types of options. And then the Green New Deal provision requires that no less than 25% of the mitigation funds would be spent on green job development programs, including education and training, to create economic opportunity for Cambridge residents. Like Santos, who you heard from earlier in the presentation, to make sure that the benefits of the just transition to sustainable energy are extended to all of our community members and especially those who have been traditionally excluded from the economic benefits of our Cambridge wealth in terms of biotech and technology and the innovation economy. So last but not least, I'll put this petition a little bit into context with the planning board. So as we mentioned, it imposes a specific requirement, which is emissions accounting during the design phase when the building is obtaining a special permit. And this is very similar to other design requirements that we impose now, like the LEED gold standard and the Green Roof Petition that was just adopted by the council recently. It requires an impact assessment and then a fee, which is analogous to the linkage fee that we charge commercial real estate properties to make up for their impact on the housing market in Cambridge. And then it requires mitigation in the public interest. And this is analogous to our inclusionary zoning, where we require luxury market rate housing developments to set aside a certain portion for affordable housing to mitigate the impacts of gentrification and displacement that that type of development has in our community. And it requires certain community benefits based on the climate impacts. In this case, the job training programs, which is similar to other community benefits that we ask our developers to make, including job training programs in other areas or public access to private open space and so on. And those are also sometimes enforced long after the building has been occupied. If the building is supposed to give to give access to private open space, that can only be enforced after the building is occupied. And we currently have mechanisms to do that. And as I explained earlier, we can enforce the payment requirements for this zoning provision through the Building Energy Use Disclosure Ordinance, once the building is occupied. So in closing, it is time for Cambridge to do climate justice and to charge for future emissions from commercial buildings and create green jobs. This picture is from our Climate Resilience Plan. And it just illustrates a little bit of the direction that we want to head in as a city in terms of tree canopy and public transportation and green space. And we want to make sure that as we move in this direction, that we include all of our community members. So I'm happy to answer some questions and thank you to my fellow presenters who are available as well on standby if the board has any questions for them.
Thank you so much. We will, as is our custom, first take a public comment. But then we will have questions from the board. So I'm sure that your presentation has raised lots of questions for people. So I look forward to that discussion after we have public comment. So this is a public hearing, and any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter should now click the button that says Raise Hand. If you are calling in by phone, you raise your hand by pressing star nine. As of 5:00 PM yesterday, the board had received one written communication on this case from Alan Sudden. Written communications received after 5:00 PM yesterday will be entered into the record. I will ask staff to unmute speakers one at a time. You should begin by saying your name and address, and staff will confirm that we can hear you. After that, you will have up to three minutes to speak before I ask you to wrap up.
Thank you. This is Jeff Roberts again. So I don't see any hands raised at this point. Just repeat the instructions again, in case anyone is looking for the button or trying to find it and needs a second. There should be a button that says Raise Hand on Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please push that button, and that will indicate to us that you would like to say something. If you're on by telephone, just press star nine on your phone. You just have to do that once, and the hand will go up and we'll know that you would like to say something. I'm just giving it a second. So I have one hand raised at this point, so that'll be our speaker. It's Lee Ferris. You can begin by unmuting yourself and giving your name and address.
Good evening. Lee Ferris, 269 Norfolk Street. I like this zoning petition a lot. I like that its aim is to accelerate our getting to net zero by incentives. And I like the idea of redirecting any funds received into these kind of Green New Deal jobs as was described. I read CDD's memo, which I'm looking forward to hearing more from them, where they say there are a number of uncertainties about how to implement the desired effect of the zoning petition. And I hope that with input from the planning board and further conversation with community development, those concerns can be met. Because I think there's a lot of really good ideas in this zoning petition, and I hope the conversation tonight will bring out the way to move forward. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. So that is all the speakers. Now, we did have one hand raised. So I'll ask one more time before going to this next speaker. If anybody would like to speak, please push the Raise Hand button now so that we can know that you'd like to speak. The next speaker is O.R. Simha. You can unmute yourself and begin with your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Robert Simha. Live at 303 Third Street in Kendall Square. I just want to express our support, the community here at Third Square and East Cambridge, on behalf of both the port and the people who live in Kendall Square and the surrounding areas of East Cambridge. We live in the center of the heat sink for this city. And this piece of legislation would make a significant contribution to lowering the situation that we now suffer from. So I urge you to support this and hope that it will move through the administrative legislative process quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the speakers. I'll turn it back over to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. We will now move from public comment to board discussion. Do board members have questions, either for community development staff or for the petitioner? Do board members have questions, either for community development staff or for the petitioner? Ted, we'll start with you.
Hey, I have a number of questions, both for CDD and the petitioner. And let me preface this by saying I don't have the scientific background to go into the issues. I do believe in climate change and the need to do something quickly. But as a former zoning attorney for many years, I I question whether some of the language in this will really achieve what the proponents want to do. And so I have questions about that and hope that it, you know, I I I think conceptually it's a great idea. But I question whether it will really achieve what the proponents really hope to achieve. And I, you know, assuming it goes forward, I hope that the ordinance committee and the city council can address some of the issues. My first question really relates to, it 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 states in section four A, well, it starts out saying it should not apply to residential buildings that include affordable units. And I I I heard that this is intended really to address only commercial buildings, commercial construction, and I question why we're eliminating other properties and especially residential buildings that include affordable units. That's what we're building now. I hope we continue to build a lot of residential buildings with affordable units. But presumably, they will also be generating emissions. And I don't understand why that's being eliminated. The the chart that councillor Carlong showed, and as I've read it, indicated that the second largest generator of emissions was residential buildings. Following up on that, the the statement is that it applies to any green building project. As I read the definition of green building project in section two of the ordinance, it covers a lot more than just commercial buildings, which I think is fine. But if indeed the proponents only wanted to cover commercial buildings, I think that needs to be addressed. I'm, you know, really sort of concerned about section four, the formula. I mean, nowhere does this proposed ordinance make clear that the the developer is going to have to pay outright for emissions and in what order and in what magnitude, how this payment is supposed to be made and where it's going to be made to. If I can also, if I could step back one second. I'm sorry. You know, there there is a question of exactly how payments are to be made and to whom they're to be made when it starts. I'm sorry, that was the issue I wanted to go back to. That the statement, the the proposal, it makes it a condition of receiving an occupancy permit. Contrary to the presentation, occupancy permit comes at the end of the design and construction of buildings and not at the beginning in the design phase and the application for and receipt of a special permit. And so it would seem that the calculation or the anticipated, the calculation of anticipated emissions ought to be done much earlier on in the proceeding, that it ought to take place as as proposed in the design phase and not at the time it's receiving an occupancy permit. I mean, it is conceivable that the the, at the time of the occupancy permit, the ISD would make a determination whether the building was built in accordance with the emissions accounting and whether it it was act, it was an accurate estimate of what was going to be generated and perhaps updated to to give, now that the building is built, more details about what the emissions will be and how they should be offset. But I think, you know, the 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 calculation, the initial calculation needs to be made at the beginning of the process rather than at the end of the process. Going back to the section four relating to the formula, and I'm I'm sorry, it's subsection G about the presentation of a payment schedule. I think that needs to be clearer that the proponent and the developer of the building will indeed have to make a payment and what the payment is going to be based upon and how it will be calculated. And and I have some questions about the statement that the offset must demonstrate direct benefits to low income and minority communities. Since this is a emissions accounting that relates to the city as a whole, I don't quite understand why the offsets relate just to those parts of the city, those residents or parts of the city, rather than to the city as a whole. I mean, I I think environmental justice is necessary, and I think that gets addressed in dealing with the the mitigation funds and where payment will be made and how the payments will be utilized. And I think that that, you know, is is all, you know, very good. But I'm wondering whether the offsets should not be relating directly to decreasing emissions and in accounting for the emissions throughout the city as a whole. I just think that, you know, I I I also question whether so much can be delegated to CDD rather than being specified in the ordinance itself as to what type of offsets would be allowed and how they will be calculated. I I am, you know, my concern is really that once this is adopted, it really is enforceable and that it will be understandable by developers and by their attorneys who are going to be scrutinizing it to try to see if there's some way around what they have to do and the the way they could get around it with the least amount of payment. So I think it's a, you know, without having the scientific background, I I think conceptually it's a great idea. But I think it really needs to be clarified a little and strengthened to to make it really enforceable. Those are my questions and comments, as it were.
Great. Thank you, Ted. Why don't we kind of, as as usual with planning board members, you know, collect all of those questions and comments and then get a response from from the petitioners and from staff to the extent we need one. So we can let people pull their thoughts together as we as we pepper them with questions. Tom, you can go next.
Thank you. Net Zero is incredibly powerful because it's such a simple concept that everybody understands. And we saw that a number of years ago, and Quentin was a leader in that. Just an amazing wellspring, you know, a overwhelming interest and passion in the community about doing something about Net Zero. But we were part of a committee together that made recommendations to the city council. But in our wisdom as a committee, I don't know how wise we were, but we did say, we don't know everything. But why don't we check back in in five years? So we just finished a five-year kind of checkup on how we did. And an amazing thing came out is is how quickly the whole landscape around these issues has changed. In particular, this notion of embodied carbon or embedded carbon wasn't even something that was discussed five to seven years ago when we first started this conversation. But it turns out that it's the most important thing, especially going back to Esther's presentation around urgency. You can make more difference in the climate impact of greenhouse gas if you mind your embedded carbon than if you work on your operational carbon. They're both important. But the most important thing to drive and 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 make change quickly, which we have to do, is embedded carbon. I was delighted to see that, yeah, okay, this is at the foreground of this proposal. In the CDD memo that I read carefully, there were some questions about how to measure embedded carbon. This is something I know about. And and so I polled some people that I that that do this. And they admitted, yes, it's difficult. But I think going to Dennis's slide, or maybe it was Quentin's, I don't remember with the pie. I guess it was Quentin's with the pie that showed actually three materials make up the majority of that problem, right? Which is steel, concrete, and aluminum. So I was told that structural engineers can quantify those materials very, very easily. And if you add timber, which is a positive part of the embedded carbon story, and you measure the concrete, the steel, the aluminum, and the timber of any given structure, you can pretty easily get a measure of what the embedded carbon of any proposal is. And you can actually ask a structural engineer to do that. So there is a way to not get the whole picture, but get a pretty good picture about the how well a building is doing with embedded carbon. And you saw that this with the ski slope that Quentin showed in his slide. I'm a visual person. That first block, very, which is the embedded carbon footprint of that structure, is is massive, right? So we really need to do something about this right now. I think there's a way to measure it. Where I would take issue with the with the proposal is I guess around something that Lee Ferris reminded me of. She was saying, there's a lot of really good ideas in this petition. I agree. Maybe there's too many. And I I was thinking, well, maybe we should split this up and do an embedded carbon section zoning petition. Maybe it's going to relate to to the jobs in the Green New Deal. But I have ideas about how you drive the development community, some of whom I know pretty well, towards that. The idea might be that you offer, you know, maybe expedited permitting. If you go into this new new zone where no one's gone to try to drive embedded carbon down in your in your buildings right away, we might be able to review your permits faster. I would say the other portions of the petition, which say there's a huge opportunity with these emerging technologies to address climate justice and address job creation, I think that's true. I I worry a little bit, again, looking at the memo, whether, how that hap, what are the, how do we actually do that in an effective way? And I go back to a tenant of that first hearing, I'm almost done here, that first hearing, which was, what, these these problems need to be solved regionally rather than a community by community. That's why the, unfortunately, the, you know, the now the the federal legislation did not did not pass. But it makes more sense to work at that scale to create jobs and use the leverage of these emerging technologies and urgency around these issues. So I would recommend that we split this into more bite-sized, more digestible sections. And I would say I would want to accelerate anything around embedded carbon in Cambridge. And by the way, we've become a a community, a leader in the nation if we could do that because there are very few communities that are on it. It's about a kind of two-year-old consciousness around this incredible issue. So I would thank the councillors, both of them, for their leadership on this. It's really exciting to see it. The devil's in the details, and Ted so beautifully began to pick those apart. So I don't know if I have so much of a question, but those are my feelings.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Lou?
Yeah, I agree with everything Ted said. I do wonder at times why we keep on excluding the PVs and all the other materials that we use commonly in these buildings. So if we're looking at aluminum, concrete, and I'll add glass, steel, and these are all components of PV arrays. So I would really like to know the the embedded carbon in these materials. I mean, we seem to exclude them. I also don't like the idea that we're excluding large or even medium-sized residential development. It's not like there's there's no material used or no energy used. If we're going to do this in a scientific way, we really need to know the numbers. And we really need everybody pulling on the same rope, the same direction. We seem to make two classes of buildings and 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 we don't need to do that. We need to do, use the science to make it work. I know someone's going to say that's a smaller percentage, but it's there. And we're building very large residential buildings now. And I don't think if the commercial side of the world has to do this and that, I would like to see the cost of these reports and these tallying of all these informations. It is not exactly clear if it's all available at the moment. Questions like, will developer be able to use the cost of compiling all this information as an offset? Because there's some considerable costs here. Again, the embedded carbon problem, I agree with Tom, we need to know the answers. But we need to also put this across the whole spectrum. If we're giving people bonuses for and trying to incentivize them for using PVs, and PVs are really heavily carbon, it's a lot of embedded carbon in them, we stop, we have to start really thinking about this. That's where I am. And all, basically, all the exempt, I would really like an understanding of why we've exempted so much.
Okay. Thanks, Lou. Hugh?
So I'm sort of trying to decide, do I state a position, which I have, or do I ask a question? I don't like playing Jeopardy, trying to frame statements as if they were questions. So my question is, what what are the financial needs of the programs that would benefit? And what's the income that this proposal would generate to accomplish that? My suspicion is that this proposal is woefully short in providing funding for the for the strengthening green jobs, energy efficiency upgrades to existing building stuff, and creating economic opportunity. So now, shall I continue or? Okay. So it seems to me this is kind of confusing. I I tried to figure out, what is this about? Is this about imposing a surtax to fund some very valuable programs? Surtax on new buildings, new commercial buildings that are being built after today? Or is it trying to incentivize the people who are doing those new buildings to reduce their emissions and to include the embedded carbon as part of that? Because I was very impressed by Tom's statement about how that's a crucial issue. how that's a crucial issue and it's one that's missing from net zero. It seems in a way this is a run around the net zero task force, the net zero plan. Because people are impatient that we're not getting the results from that zero that we hoped we would get. So I read through, I leafed through the plan. The plan documents are over a hundred pages. They came out six months ago. There's a whole list of things. This isn't on the list. So that's sort of strange, you know, it's. Why isn't it on the list? That's making me think this is an end run around that whole effort, which has been going on for years and is, I think, borne more fruit than we're taking credit for. So I think that the that the particular language proposed really is at odds with the paragraphs that's being inserted to. The section twenty two twenty basically has very specific purposes. And the purposes are to make people build more efficient buildings. And they have very specific procedures. It is spelled out, none of which really apply to this proposal. It has its own set of buried procedures and they aren't actually worked out. You know, C D T was to hire some consultants to come up with what what the rules are. And so I think from a zoning point of view, this isn't, it's probably not. There's a zoning piece to it, but I think that piece is to strengthen the green requirements. And in particular, to add in the embedded carbon in the materials as part of that strengthening of those requirements. I think if you want to get the programs funded, get them in the city budget. The city budget needs to be increased, increase the taxes on the commercial properties. Now, it seems to me that's much more straightforward. If we want to do this stuff, then let's just fund it properly to get it done and not create this very complicated program, which may or may not work and which in some ways is very unfair. Because the existing building stock, be they buildings that were built last year or a hundred years ago, are a much bigger part of the problem than the buildings that are being built next year. So that that bothers me. So I think those those are my basic comments. I think you know, like many proposals, there's a sense of urgency from the public, from the council. A desire to get things done and not wait for the procedures that have been set up to bear fruition. And in particular, because net zero doesn't include embedded carbon, which Tom says is really very important as a part of this. So I I, well, as you can see, I'm having real problems with this proposal, not with its goals, but with its, what as Ted said, will it achieve the goals? Or will it just not achieve the goals?
Thank you, Hugh. Lou, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just a quick one. I guess everyone else has got a really long list of questions on their paperwork, but we'd be here until a couple of days from now. I'm curious, in the slide, I I so we've built a lot of new buildings and we haven't gotten the desired effect. I don't know if that was a cumulative problem, because we all know that all of the buildings that were that are being built at this time are much more energy efficient. So is this a problem of we have so many buildings that are being built that tip the numbers? Also, at some point, we do have to address the existing building stock. And I don't know, that's a much larger question, but the intent is good. I I just don't see it. I have too many questions here and it would take forever to answer them all. But I I do agree with Tom on the embedded carbon. And I and I would like to see the numbers on some of these materials. I mean, if we're going in the wrong direction, we need to know in a big hurry also. So I'm curious about that.
Okay, thanks, Lou. So just to add my two cents, most of what I had in my list has been covered. I just want to emphasize, I I my concerns about this are like many of my colleagues procedural rather than the goals. I I know, I know how uncomfortable C D D can be with the things that we try to delegate to them. And sometimes it's as small as a design review on color. This is, there's a lot of detail left here that will be first promulgated in regulations, but also then just determined by staff. And I'm not sure that's the right place for all of it. I I do appreciate that there has to be some greater flexibility and discretion to evolve with technology changes and new understanding as we learn more. But I I really think kind of the guidelines and what we're aiming for has to be better laid out in this proposal in order to give C D D the guidance that they would need to do their jobs and and feel like they were still kind of within that administrative purview. Similarly, I I I can't remember if it was Ted or Hugh, but I I think there's part of this that is zoning. And I think there's part of it that is not. And again, that's not to say that the part that is not is bad. It just maybe belongs in a different city ordinance rather than as part of zoning. So I I I think there, you know, there's a lot of good ideas in here. I do think that, you know, maybe one of the things that we do want to look at is how do we get embedded carbon factored into net zero? That that's, I think there's a lot of good ideas here to push forward with and and to act on with some urgency. But I I think like Hugh, I'm feeling this is not as fleshed out. And and I I think Tom said, in some respects, there's too much in it. And what's in it hasn't been fleshed out enough. It's probably two or three separate ordinances, each of which need more detail in them from from my perspective. So let's pause there and turn it back to the petitioners for a moment. See if there, if you can answer any of our questions or give us additional context or comfort that might help move us forward together. Because I think what you are hearing from this board is everyone is supportive of the goal.
Thank you, ma'am chair, and through you, my thanks to the planning board members for their comments. I I really do appreciate the questions a lot. And as you can imagine, I I've pondered many of them myself. So I do have some answers, but not necessarily all the answers. But I I am encouraged by the conversation. So to answer the question about why exempt housing, which is a very good question, and you know, we thought about that a lot. So there there's a couple of things there. One is that the net zero action plan is on track for the most part in terms of getting our housing construction to net zero. So the the net zero action plan lays out a schedule for when different building types need to be net zero new construction. And that's twenty twenty two for small residential, twenty twenty five for large residential and commercial, and then twenty thirty for the labs. And and as Tom mentioned, that was hashed out seven years ago. And amazingly enough, we we got it pretty much on the dot right. Because just this year, the spring, the legislature approved the the climate roadmap bill, which mandates that the a net zero action, excuse me, a net zero energy stretch code is established by the the state regulatory bodies. And and that bill was signed into law by Governor Baker. So so within eighteen months, we are supposed to to get a net zero energy stretch code from the state, which we can then adopt in Cambridge and begin to apply to our building stock. And so my assumption, and and I think many people's assumption, is that we would apply that stretch energy code in accordance with the schedule. So in other words, we would apply it immediately to small residential because the construction industry and and the technology and the economics have all caught up to the point where we can actually build small residential buildings, net zero, with relatively little trouble. And even retrofitting, which is expensive, is not impossible. And I'm happy to say that I actually achieved that for our family home last month. And so we are actually in, I'm sitting in a net zero building right now. But as we scale up the building size, it becomes a more challenging problem. And so, but even for for larger housing projects in Cambridge, we're seeing, you know, we amended the green building ordinance to allow alternative compliance to lead, right? To passive house and and the community standard. And we are seeing affordable housing projects and and even market rate projects coming to the planning board that are all electric and and in some cases even passive house and net zero. So so in many ways, the the housing industry is already on track. Now, that doesn't account for the embedded carbon. And so, you know, I I do take that to heart, that that perhaps we shouldn't exempt housing when we're talking about embedded carbon. But in terms of the lifetime emissions, those are coming down really fast. And as we showed already, you know, for new construction, and as we showed already, the existing housing stock is is a tiny percent of our overall emissions. So all the the growth in emissions that was asked about is primarily due to the commercial and and especially the laboratory buildings that add a lot of energy use. And and certainly, they've become more energy efficient, which is great. But energy efficiency is not the same thing as zero. So they're still generating a lot of energy consumption and therefore a lot of emissions. And that's all additive, right? Because we're not effectively and rapidly enough reducing the emissions in existing buildings. Now, to address that question, you know, of of the inherent unfairness of only looking at new buildings and not existing buildings, I I agree and I appreciate that perspective. And in fact, we are looking at the existing buildings. That's where the building energy use disclosure ordinance, which is not part of the zoning petition. So I'm not going to go into a lot of details about it. But but that ordinance is specifically focused on existing buildings. And as I mentioned, we are anticipating specific amendments from C D D that were previewed in the Health Environment Committee that will drive down the emissions in existing buildings as well. Now, again, currently, that doesn't account for embedded carbon, but but again, that could be added to to the building energy use disclosure ordinance as well. I did want to quickly address Ted's comments about requiring that the mitigation benefits low income and minority communities. It it certainly does not say and is not intended to only benefit minority and low income communities, but rather that it must benefit them. And in any program that does justice, that does benefit low income and minority communities will necessarily benefit the entire community. So so the intent is not to say you must only benefit them, but rather that whatever you're doing must demonstrate some benefit to those communities. And so, for example, when we look at community solar, the city has already partnered with a community solar provider that sells the electricity that's generated from the community solar arrays exclusively to low income tenants in Cambridge. And by doing that, we are directly benefiting those communities, but we're also benefiting everyone by increasing the amount of solar that is available on the grid and reducing the amount of emissions that we're generating. So that's just one example, but but it's it's certainly not meant to be exclusive. It's it's doing equity, which means we have to focus on the people who are the most impacted. But anytime we do that, I have yet to come across any example that benefits the most impacted people and does not also benefit everyone else. Certainly agree that this is a regional issue. And in fact, it's it's obviously a global issue. But we have to do our part and 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 we can be leaders. And and we demonstrated that with net zero eight years ago. And many communities around the Boston metro region contacted myself and and former mayor Davis at the time and asked us to speak to their communities about what we are doing in Cambridge with net zero. Even now, I'm actively working with the Rocky Mountain Institute. And we are sharing a lot of the the learning and groundbreaking work that we're doing in Cambridge with other communities across the state who are following that lead and and applying that knowledge to their own situation. So so it's it's really critical that we lead here in Cambridge because we can. I did want to address the question about why exclude the embedded carbon in solar arrays. I haven't looked at this recently, but the the latest numbers that I saw a few years ago were that solar panels essentially pay for their embedded carbon after one year of operation. And and my panels are are guaranteed for twenty years. Most panels are expected to last forty to fifty years or more. We still have solar panels panels operating that were originally deployed in the nineteen seventies. So the the panels do have some embodied carbon, of course, everything does. But they offset emissions so effectively and so rapidly that those embedded carbons are are offset within within just one year of operation. So it it doesn't really make sense to penalize developers for installing solar because they would be offsetting so many more emissions than they would generate. And the the question about, you know, is this supposed to incentivize reducing emissions? Or is it supposed to generate funds for these very important programs? It's a really good question and and it's, of course, a conundrum of any Pigovian scheme, right? Where you're charging for something you don't want and then using the funds to do good. But of course, if you're successful, then you're driving down those revenues rapidly. And that's all good in in my mind, because if the the important thing is to get started with these programs. And so if we are actually successful beyond our dreams and we're seeing building emissions in new buildings rapidly decline, then we would indeed set up alternative funding for for these programs because those programs themselves would be demonstrating their benefits or not. And if they are showing great benefits but suffering from And if they are showing great benefits but suffering from potentially reduced revenues, then we would be providing those revenues through other means. So I I'm not terribly concerned about that. I think the 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 link here is important, but it's only to get things going. If if we have a robust green jobs training program and our building emissions are rapidly going to zero and we need a million dollars a year to continue those programs, I'm sure we will find a way. But I don't think that should be held against this proposal. The primary goal here is to create incentives to reduce building emissions. And since the only way that we have to to impose a a cost is financial, we have to use those funds in ways that are appropriate and beneficial. But, you know, that's not to try to create a dependence where those revenues would need to continue to come in in order for those programs to continue to be successful. So I I think I addressed most of the questions that I thought I could address. I I don't know if Councilor Carlon or or other co-presenters want to offer further comments.
I'll add a few comments. You've certainly covered the breadth of of the comments. On Ted's question about it has to be strengthened to be enforceable, this is the first round. We need this feedback to refine it and and learn from your experience. And we haven't even shown it to the solicitor yet, or at least I'm not aware we have. No, I didn't think so. So that will come. Why housing isn't included? If you ask the council, what was the number one land use that we want to promote? It's residential. That is not the administration's point of view. Administration's point of view is sixty percent should be commercial from a tax point of view. Some of us think we have more than enough labs and not enough residential since all many residents from different directions want more residential. Should glass be in on the embedded list? I even said that today to our team. I totally agree. And I've done green buildings like my fellow architects on the board have. And I did passive buildings in the eighties. And there's some basic rules, including limiting glass to where it's most beneficial. And you can do that in non-urban sites, less so in urban sites. But there are basic rules. And I see so many glass buildings, the whole facade. It's ridiculous. I mean, that's my point of view. And when I've done it, it's triple glazing. And it turns out from Canada, it was cost effective. So I totally agree with with Lou's comment on that. I, Councilor Zondervan, mentioned we'll get it in the budget. I have no doubt we'll get it in the budget. But Louis or any manager is looking for additional sources to fill the needed amount. And this, if we can somehow link this in, even if there isn't a lot of money, that will help. And Catherine's comment, part zoning, part not, right on target. We talked about that, too. But again, this is the first round. We have some encouragement and some questions. And you have expertise in your staff and yourselves that we don't have. I learned my lesson with zoning for Concord Avenue. Wow, and we'll never do that again. Now I give a list to staff and say, how can we do this? So thank you. That's all the comments I wanted to make.
Okay. Any follow up thoughts or questions from board members? Ted?
I have a question. I don't know who it's for. But if the emissions are basically concrete, steel, glass, aluminum, and the idea is to bring down the emissions, are there other construction materials that are better than others? I mean, are we asking people to do the impossible? I mean, making an accounting, I think, is great. But if if the idea is to promote other materials, what are those other materials?
Yeah, Councilor Zondervan, do you want to address that?
Thank you. Yeah, that's that's really a great question. And, you know, again, we we don't, we don't have all the answers yet. But the technology and the innovation continues to improve. And it's not just simply a question of swapping out the materials, although that's certainly part of it. But it's also how those materials are produced, you know, how they're sourced. So for example, right, with aluminum, obviously, from a from an embedded carbon point of view, there's much less embedded carbon if that's recycled aluminum than if it's, you know, fresh aluminum from the ground. That's not to say that we can just make that happen. But but there are ways to adjust the process by which the material is produced that reduces the embedded carbon emissions of that material. And then there are alternative materials, as as Tom mentioned. Timber is is a fascinating material. And in the 2072 Mass Ave project, my understanding is that there that they are, or at least were when they presented to me, considering using a new form of of compressed timber instead of steel. And and what is really fascinating about that is that the the timber is all carbon. And so it it's actually sequestering carbon rather than emitting it. And and of course, the the trees that are used have to be grown sustainably. But so so there's both things at play. There's there there are some alternative materials that exist and that will exist in the future. And then there are alternative ways of producing the materials, both of which can reduce the embedded carbon.
Councilor Carlon, did you want to add to that?
Sure. I I know the board knows this, and maybe some of you will add other things. But it isn't just the material, it's the amount of material you use in a building. You know, punched windows worked for most of the last three hundred, five hundred years as opposed to continuous amounts of glass. There are different materials, composite materials, to enclose a window frame. Traditional materials tend to be more sustainable because the processes were less industrialized. So there, there's a lot that can be done. The focus on metal and glass, I think, is a major step back in these efforts and even aesthetics. And flush glass to the coming right out to the front of the building means more transmission of sunlight and heat and cooling. You probably all know the big issue is going to be cooling. Well, what, why does the need go up? It goes up because you have less insulation values in the glass structure. And believe me, they do all, my colleagues know, they 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 engineers do everything they can to make it reasonable. But think of what it could be if we did intelligently what the facades are. And it would be nice, just to go off my direction, just have humanized scaled buildings again, where you can identify where a person could be instead of a solid wall of glass which goes black during the day. That's another alternative. So there are a number of things you can do.
Councilor Zondervan?
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, if I can add also, accounting for embedded carbon, of course, is not requiring that it be eliminated. So we're we're not requiring that the embedded carbon of of a building be zero tomorrow. Maybe, you know, decades from now, we we would live in that future, and that would be amazing. But in the meantime, we would be asking to account for the embedded carbon. And that would hopefully lead the developers to look for lower embedded carbon solutions. But if they don't exist or they're not available yet, or they're not economic yet, then they may simply choose to pay the fee instead. And again, we would put that fee to good use. And so that's the the beauty of of this type of carbon accounting is that we're not asking for the impossible. We're just asking for an accounting of the impact or the cost of the current approach.
Right. Lou?
Just a quick one, following up on Councilor Carlon. I agree. At some point, if we're looking at buildings, we're talking about glass, concrete, steel, and a lot of aluminum, which in the science world is known as solid electricity. I'd like to see the numbers on rock wool. We're stuffing rock wool in the buildings and on the facades to try to get some insulation. I'd like to see what the embedded carbon is there. All of these materials are very heavily carbon embedded. I don't know if the masonry world is where we should go, but certainly has a longevity there. I know it's heavy and the front loaded. But some of our buildings are two hundred years old and they're masonry buildings. And if you stretch out the carbon footprint of those over two hundred years, we may have something better. Don't get me wrong, we have to have a variety of materials. But a lot of these materials that we've gone to are so heavily carbon embedded. And I was wondering what this would do to our green building ordinance. Would this affect our green building ordinance at all?
Just to respond quickly, the another material that that is available even today is there's a type of concrete that actually absorbs carbon from the air over its lifetime. And I was just reading an article in Scientific American last week about these rocks in in the desert in Oman that they are now studying that absorb tons of carbon. And so you can imagine incorporating those types of materials into the building material. And the building could actually become a net carbon sink over its lifetime rather than an emitter. These amendments are directly to the the green building ordinance. So I I guess the answer is yes, it's it's modifying the green building ordinance itself.
So they would still have to report on fifty units or above? The original ordinance requires reporting over fifty units. And then this ordinance excludes residential?
Just just the new provision that we're adding says that that provision doesn't apply. So so the residential developers wouldn't have to do this emissions accounting that we're proposing here. But they would still have to comply with the rest of the green building ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members? If not, what 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 would the board like to do at this juncture? We, you know, we have the, you know, we can make a recommendation, we can send a report to city council. We can hold it for further discussion at a later date. Tom, thoughts?
I'm well, conscious of the fact that we have two city councils right here, right? So making a report to them. I think we've done that, and I appreciated the feedback they're giving us that actually they're learning quite a lot about from the perspectives we're bringing to the to the discussion tonight. I, for one, feel pretty strongly, like I think Ted does, that the ordinance has drafted, the section of the ordinance is drafted, is absolutely not ready for prime time to be incorporated into section twenty-two. There are just too many questions about how it gets administered, that never mind the specific language. And so I I don't know how we help the legislative process other than, you know, I feel strongly that it require this. There's a lot of great ideas, and I think, you know, my notion is it should be atomized. You should make it into smaller pieces and and pass it incrementally. I think there's a huge amount of ambition here, notwithstanding huge good good questions about whether this is the actual mechanism to achieve some of the goals that that the councillors have. So I I sort of want to just forward it with, you know, with a non-recommendation, you know, saying that there should be further study and they should take our comments in under advisement, something like that.
Okay. Other thoughts? Lou?
I'd agree it's not really ready for prime time. I think it needs to be cleaned up. But I'd also like to see the exclusions changed, especially in resident, for the residential side. And I mean, if we're going down to the level of how much carbon is embedded in the plants that are being brought to the job. I think we should have numbers on all the materials and so forth. And I guess at some point, can you make it so that you don't have to charge this penalty to make up the difference for residential development? It would be nice that if this is going to be a fact finding for the the facts.
Okay. Thanks, Lou. Ted?
Well, I I certainly agree with what Tom and and Lou have said, that it's, you know, I I from what I hear of my colleagues is that we all think there's a lot of good ideas in this and that they should be pursued, you know, quickly. But that it's it's, there are a lot of issues that have been raised, both in terms of, you know, what can be done and what can't be done. What will pass muster with the city solicitor's office, who I think should be brought into the discussion right away? You know, what is appropriate to be in zoning and perhaps what should be in a non-zoning ordinance? You know, but, you know, taking Councilor Carlon and Zondervan at the word that, you know, they're looking for feedback from us and suggestions from us, then, you know, clearly, it's not, yes, pass it the way it is, or no, reject it completely, that it's, you know, somebody should be working on it and following up on it. That I think there's support from this board. You know, if if it can be more focused, let's say, and clarified and with the help of the city solicitor's office, be clear that what will be required and what can be enforced will will make it a much better ordinance.
Hugh?
I guess I'd be interested in hearing from Iran as to what kind of a process could be envisioned to accomplish the goals and get this into a place that it can be enacted.
Through you, Chair. We have, I I have to admit that we have not given a lot of thought to some sort of process around this. What we could do is have, so I'm thinking on my feet, is have a follow up discussion with the the councillors, the proponents of this offline, along with the law department, to try to kind of go comb through the various components, taking into account the feedback that we have heard today. So and and then try to get to the point of what pieces would make sense in zoning, what pieces might belong in a separate ordinance, which automatically would get to the point that some of you have raised about this being too too big of an of a work item right now. And if we if we tease it apart into zoning and non and the other ordinance pieces, then the councillors can then the councillors can guide us on what they think is the topmost priority to pursue first. And then we can start to knock through those. That's just one thinking on my feet, one formulation. But I would say that we would want to talk to councillors, Zanderman and Carlon and others to kind of figure out if that's an acceptable path for them.
So I think what I'm hearing from my fellow board members then is we are in favor of providing comments on the proposal without making a recommendation that it either be adopted or not adopted because there is support for the goals, even if there is not support for adoption in its current form. Hugh, correct me if I'm wrong. My sense is that your concern has more to do with the practicality as opposed to the aim. Is that correct?
I suspect you're correct, yes.
Okay. I just... And I don't want to like shoehorn us all into one place if we're not there. I think what I'm hearing from folks is general support for the goals that the councillors have set out with their constituents to move forward, advance here. And there's support for advancing them. So we don't want to send a negative recommendation because that would send the wrong message. But we are also not prepared to send a positive recommendation. So I think we are sending comments with a summary of what we've discussed here tonight. And then when you have refined the proposals and they're coming back in some other form, we will be happy to sit with you again. I think that's kind of where we're landing as a board. Do board members have other thoughts on... I'm seeing thumbs up. I always like that. Okay. Then is there a motion to provide comments without making a positive or negative recommendation on adoption?
So moved.
Louis moves?
Second.
Ted seconds. Roll call vote.
On that motion, Lou Bachi?
Yes.
Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinevich?
Yes.
Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this thoughtful proposal to us and for your efforts to further refine it and advance these goals.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair, and thank you to all the board members. This has been a very productive conversation. I really appreciate it.
Great. I believe if it's possible, Jeff, that that concludes the business on our agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have anything else that we need to be discussing?
I don't have anything. I don't see anyone else jumping in.
Okay. Oh, Hugh, did you have something else or your hand's still up?
I will lower my hand.
Okay.